All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, December 8th, 2010 Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. This is a special public hearing. Thank you. There we go. Can everybody hear me now? All right. Thank you. All right. I'd like to call the Wednesday, December 8th, 2010 Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. This is a special public hearing in order to hear opinions on raising the vehicle registration fee for the Sellwood Bridge. And so, the first thing on our agenda, as normal, is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will all join us and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of no other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I need to just walk everybody through. One is that we are going to have folks that have not previously testified, testify this evening in respect to everybody's time. You've all had plenty of chances to get your testimony in if you had already testified, if you wanted to submit more in writing. We welcomed that, and the deadline for that was 6:00 PM tonight. So if you feel like you testified before and you want to run off and get off something on your PDA and get it to us, that would be great. So we're going to limit it to folks who have not already testified. The second thing is because of the volume of folks that want to testify, we're going to limit folks' testimony to two minutes so that we can get you in and out in the most efficient manner possible. So if you'll bear with us, we're going to go to two minutes. Commissioner Bernard.
So if people testify, they can still turn in their testimony at the time they testify, correct?
Yeah. Up until 6:00 PM, we're still accepting testimony from outside sources.
Okay.
At 7:30, if we have not gotten through all of the testimony, we are going to take a quick break. Thanks. We need that at some point. So the other thing that I just want to remind you all, I see a lot of familiar faces, but we... Did I lose my... Can you still all hear me? Okay. We try to be as respectful in these meetings as possible, not only to your time, but to a diversity of opinions in Clackamas County. And so, as you know, what we try and do here is that if you agree with folks that are speaking, please raise your hand in support of them. If there's a lot of clapping, we can't hear the person speaking, and it kind of draws out the time, and we'll all be here for a very long time. So I would appreciate it if you all just raised your hand. That lets us know if you're in support of the speaker or not. If you are not in support of what the speaker is saying, I would appreciate it if you would allow them to finish their testimony without any comments from the audience. It would really be the most respectful thing to do. And I say these things just to remind us of the ground rules of what it means to be part of a democracy and part of America. So I think I've gotten everything. If I forgot anything, I'm looking at Mary in terms of... All right. So we do have about... We have 55 people signed up at this point. And when you signed up, you probably saw your number, so that tells you, if we're two minutes apiece, where you are generally in terms of time. I'm going to ask the first person to come up from the city of Portland, Ron Geeson. Oh, I'm sorry, Ron. I forgot to have staff give their introduction.
I can do it very briefly.
Yes, that's why he's coming up, representing. All right. So we'll... I'm sorry about that. We're going to do the background information first. I was just so excited to go into testimony. I apologize. Cam Gilmore from the Department of Transportation and Development.
Yes, Cam Gilmore, Director of Transportation and Development. And for those of you that weren't present almost two weeks ago, it'll be two weeks tomorrow, I'm going to give you just a brief overview of what we're here about tonight. Most of you already know, but give you some information about the project. I think I can get through this in about two minutes. The first... What we're talking about tonight is the first reading that was done two weeks ago for a proposed ordinance which would establish a vehicle registration fee for various classes of light vehicles registered in Clackamas County, which would provide the revenue for the Clackamas County share of the cost of replacing the Sellwood Bridge. This consideration is enabled by the passage of a piece of legislation in 2009 passed by the Oregon Legislature, known as the Jobs Transportation Act and also known as House Bill 2001. And this bill allows counties with a population of over 350,000 or over to enact an ordinance for the purposes of establishing a vehicle registration fee to pay for a crossing of the Willamette River in the city of Portland, which means the Sellwood Bridge is what that is intended to mean. Let me give you some background on why. First and foremost, the Sellwood Bridge is an important element of the regional transportation system, and is heavily used by traffic traveling to and from Clackamas County. It is the only crossing between Oregon City and the city of Portland, a distance of about 12 miles, and it is located just about one mile from the Clackamas County boundary with Multnomah County, about a mile away. In 1999, a study entitled "The South Willamette River Crossing Study" determined that 70% of the daily traffic using the bridge is traveling either to or from Clackamas County. So this establishes that, in fact, it's a critical structure in not just the regional transportation system, but we feel it's a critical structure also in the county system, even though it's just outside the county boundary. The bridge itself is beyond its design life, having been constructed in 1925. It's now load limited, which means heavy vehicles, that would include buses and heavy trucks, tractor-trailer rigs that are heavy, cannot use it with this 10-ton load limit. The Federal Highway Administration requires that every other year at least, bridges be rated as to their condition and their adequacy. This particular bridge has a rating of 2 out of 100. Now, that would scare most people and probably should, but actually, the bridge today with the load limit on it, and you can see here on the film, you see traffic traveling, mostly cars, of course, traveling on it, it is safe to travel on, but it is load limited, and that's because Multnomah County takes a great deal of care in making sure that it's safe to travel over. A new bridge... Well, this bridge would not be able to sustain even a moderate earthquake. And another way of saying this is it's vulnerable to an earthquake or a tremor. And so, a new bridge really is needed at some time sooner than later, and a new bridge will be constructed to withstand a major earthquake. And the engineers call that an earthquake that might occur every 500 years or so, so it would be a fairly major one. And an effort will be made to design this bridge so it can sustain that level of shaking. A file environmental impact statement has now been approved for this project by the Federal Highway Administration, as has what's called a Record of Decision. This is important. It's an important milestone because it means that the project is now ready to proceed to final design. The project hasn't been designed yet. Right-of-way acquisition and construction. I want to mention in that, in passing, a number of alternatives were looked at in that draft and final environmental impact statement, including just leaving... The film isn't on anymore, but leaving the bridge as you saw it in place by just repairing it. That alternative didn't really stand the test of adequacy because the existing bridge is too narrow. It doesn't safely accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists, let alone cars. It is load limited. While it can be upgraded to allow heavier vehicles to travel over it, that would not be a 75-year life of the bridge, which the new bridge will be designed to achieve. So actually, over a 75-year period, it would be a lot more expensive to simply repair the bridge and upgrade it than to replace it. So that's the conclusion that was reached in the environmental impact statement process. Now, as to funding sources, today, the funding looks as follows. Multnomah County, they've enacted a vehicle registration fee of $19 a year last year. They're at $127 million. They are the bridge owners. The city of Portland is at $100 million. The Oregon Department of Transportation is at $30 million. Clackamas County is considering $22 million, and the Federal Highway Administration, $11 million. If you add that up, it's $290 million. And the estimate in the environmental impact statement says a replacement bridge could cost as much as $330 million. So needless to say, efforts are underway to reduce the cost of this structure. There is some potential to do that. We think there's some potential to reduce the cost at the western interchange of the bridge with the Oswego Highway. None of that will be completely known until that engineering work is done. But importantly, the project, on one hand... Well, not on one hand, but the project could be viewed as being $40 million short today. We're hoping that's not the case. The $22 million from Clackamas County is the amount that's necessary, we think, to fully fund this project. That's the point. And again, the final design will commence next year, and hopefully, by the end of next year, there'll be more accurate cost estimates. And I believe Multnomah County plans to let the contract on this... Actually, have it under construction, I should say, in about two years. That's the goal. Specifically, the ordinance is a $5 per year vehicle registration fee, but when you register your vehicle, you'd be seeing $10 because you register your vehicle every other year, or when you buy a new vehicle, you'd see that $10 added on. So we call that, though, $5 per year because that's how the Oregon revised statutes address vehicle registration fees in a per-year basis. So it's $5 per year. That would be enough revenue coming forward to pay the county's $22 million capital share of this project. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Commissioner, hand.
I just wanted to ask a question that had come up a number of times. The last hearing was, "Why can't we just repair this bridge instead of replace it?" I presume analysis has been done on that, but I don't know exactly how that decision was arrived at.
It was looked at as one of many alternatives. This project had different alignment alternatives, different structure type alternatives, and repair was something that was looked at initially. And because of the... It's a narrow bridge. While it can be made structurally more sound, it can't be made structurally more sound for a 75-year design life, so there'd be recurring expenses that, over time, would add up to a cost in all likelihood greater than the cost of just simply replacing it. Secondly, if it was just, again, repaired, it's still a narrow bridge, and it doesn't safely accommodate bicycles and pedestrians. So all those factors went into the decision-making, and what emerged from all of the input from the citizens and from others was replace the bridge with a new one.
All right. Any other clarifying questions? Should we proceed to public testimony? Great. All right. Ron, representing the city of Portland, I'll be having the city jurisdictional representatives come up first. And Ron is here from the city of Portland. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks very much. Can you all hear me?
Oh, yeah. If you want to wait 30 seconds. It's a big screen.
Take your time. Good evening. I'm Ron Geeson. I'm the manager of Business Services for the City of Portland Bureau of Transportation. And I'm speaking tonight in favor of the motor vehicle registration fee and want to encourage you to pass this, and we appreciate your leadership and your partnership in this effort. Happy holidays to you all. I send greetings from my director, Sue Keel, who is a Clackamas County resident, who would love to be here, but she has broken her left hip and is incapacitated. And I give you greetings from Mayor Adams as well. Early in this process, when the mayor announced that we would contribute $100 million to this $330 million project, over 30%, many of my colleagues in the Transportation Bureau wondered about this and questioned whether or not we had needs closer to the downtown area, around our immediate neighborhoods, that couldn't use this type of support. And he was adamant, and in this case, absolutely right, that the Sellwood Bridge is a regional resource that needs partnership and needs to be replaced badly. And so with this, I'm just... I'm committing to you that the city has invested early and large in this project, over 30%, $100 million. And that's our commitment because we feel very strongly, and we want to encourage you to join the partnership of federal, state, and regional organizations that are involved in the bridge. It's important to note, I think, the job stimulus aspect of this facility. In the short run, during the construction period through fiscal year 2016, your estimates are that this is going to produce just less than 6,000 jobs. This is a very important economic stimulus package that you have in front of you, and I would encourage you to think about that as we go forward. It's been stated that 70% of the trips over the Sellwood Bridge originate in Clackamas County, and the value of your investment in this enterprise is around 7%. Again, that is not a very... That's a very, very nice return on investment, and I do think that that's worthy of consideration in all of this.
I can just ask you to wrap up, Ron. I apologize.
In all of this. We are partners with you. We have been strong partners before, and we think this idea is worthy of your support. We appreciate your leadership, and we stand with you to make this new bridge a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions while we have them? Ron, I just have one question. Your staff have been working very hard to find cost efficiencies with Multnomah County along with our staff, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that in bringing down the cost of the bridge. I know that one of your engineers, Jody, who was formerly of Clackamas County, worked very hard on a redesign of the west end interchange with everybody in the region. And off the top of your head, there's probably a cost savings about the gap that we were talking about earlier, of the $30 to $40 million range?
Our best estimate at this point is that there's about $40 million worth of savings in this project, and we are trying to nail that down. But you're right, we have been working really hard to make sure that this bridge is really cost-effective.
Thank you. Thank you for working with us on that, and thank you for coming in this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I've got two elected officials, Mary Olson and Jenny Tan, if you want to come up. And if you'll just let us know if you're representing yourself or the city when you come up. Yeah, come on up. Yeah, and speak directly into the mic so we can hear you. Councilor Olson, we've got two minutes on the clock, and your name and address.
Yeah. I'm going to read this really fast because I didn't expect to be limited to two minutes. My name is Mary Olson, and I'm a Lake Oswego City Councilor, and I am representing myself and not my council tonight. The purpose of my testimony is to clarify previous testimony by Councilor Donna Jordan at your public hearing two weeks ago on November 24th, 2010. As background, two days before Thanksgiving, which was the day before your public hearing, Lake Oswego Mayor Jack Hoffman called Councilor Jordan from China and asked her to take a poll of our council on supporting the vehicle registration fee increase, and then to testify at your hearing in support. I just want to go on record as saying that we have never discussed this as a council, and we have never had a vote on supporting the fee. When Councilor Jordan called me, I expressed reservations about the fee being a foot in the door to future fee increases to be used for other projects. But because I fear a disaster occurring on the Sellwood Bridge due to the negligence of the responsible jurisdictions, I said I could support it if it were to have a sunset clause and never be increased, and only to be used for the Sellwood Bridge project. Councilor Jordan assured me that she would express my caveats to you in her testimony, but I don't think she did. In thinking about this proposed fee increase further and researching it more thoroughly, I have come to the conclusion that it is not appropriate for the following reasons. It is a dangerous precedent to start cross-jurisdictional funding of projects. This is a slippery slope, and where would it stop? Will we be asked to pay for the St. John's Bridge repairs in the future? Do people from Portland or Multnomah County pay for the Camby Ferry? Of course not. The Sellwood Bridge is the responsibility of Multnomah County, period. The talk of 70% of the trips being from or to Clackamas County is a red herring. You could use arguments like that all over the metro region to justify any project. This second reason, this should be put out for a vote of the people, and just because former Speaker Dave Hunt got legislation passed that allows this county to circumvent a vote, doesn't mean you shouldn't have a vote. Number three, this is not about the Sellwood Bridge. This is about a new revenue stream for Clackamas County by means of a new tax without a vote. There is a plan to further increase this fee in three years and split it up on projects between the county and the cities. Fourth and last, the Sellwood Bridge problem exists because of a lack of priority setting by the responsible agencies. It is not because there is not enough money, it is because the money is being spent on other things. We are building bridges for light rail and streetcar projects while the Sellwood Bridge crumbles. For these reasons, I cannot support the proposed increase of the vehicle registration fee, and I thank you for letting me provide my input tonight.
Thank you for coming. Jenny, Councilor Tan-elect.
My name is Jenny Tan from Westland City Council, and I am speaking on behalf of all the members of our council. And we will be supporting the vehicle registration fee. Thank you for the opportunity to attend today's hearing and testify on the proposed $5 vehicle registration fee. The Westland City Council has reviewed the situation for replacing the Sellwood Bridge and offers the following comments. The Sellwood Bridge is a critical link in the region's transportation system, and it is clear that it is now in desperate need of replacement. We understand that the Clackamas County representatives have worked alongside regional partners from Multnomah and Washington Counties, as well as the city of Portland, to determine an appropriate method for allocating the replacement cost. An allocation of $22 million, or just 7% of the estimated cost of $330 million, seems to be very fair and a reasonable result for the county. As Westland City Councilors, we are not fully knowledgeable of all the county's sources of funding, but we believe that the county is in a similar situation as the city with regards to available resources for road maintenance and improvements. There is nothing extra. Therefore, we assume that the county has explored all available means for funding its share of the project and determined that the $5 registration fee is the most fair, reasonable, and practical. We trust our elected colleagues at the county to make this decision in the best interest of residents and businesses in Clackamas County. Thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony today.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. All right. We're onto the rest of the list. I'm going to have Wilda Parks from the North Clackamas Chamber and Kevin Phillips come Come on up. I just want to call out, Mayor-elect from Happy Valley is here. Lori Dreamer, did you want to testify? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to check. All right. Wilda.
Good evening. I am Wilda Parks. I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer of the North Clackamas County Chamber of Commerce, and I submitted a letter of support from our Chamber of Commerce. However, my goal here tonight is to share with you the thoughts of the Clackamas County Economic Development Commission, of which I am also an appointed member. We've submitted a letter for you. We are in full support of the vehicle registration fee, and for all of the various reasons that have already been mentioned, but I do want to reiterate just a couple of them, and I'll do that hopefully within that two-minute time. We know that it's unsafe. We know that it is a regional transportation link. We know that it speaks to livability. It speaks to complete communities. It speaks to having an area that is fully accessible and accessible by everything, including our emergency vehicles, which cannot access us right now over that bridge. We do believe that the figures are certainly true, that 70% of the users of that bridge are from Clackamas County, and they're going both ways. So folks are coming in, folks are going out. There's a lot of that kind of thing. The new bridge will conform to the 50-year seismic standards, and that's extremely important. The Economic Development Commission urges that the board let the Sellwood Bridge vehicle registration fee sunset once the project's financial obligation has been met. We look forward to working with you as we continue through this consideration of another vehicle registration fee separate from this to address the needs that we have in the county on deferred maintenance and capital projects in partnership with our cities. And tolling the Willamette River bridges might also be a long-term approach that we hope that folks will consider in the future. I want to thank you for your leadership in this, working to fund this vital transportation link. And please let me know if you have any more questions, either of myself from the EDC or from the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Kevin.
Kevin Phillips, 24410 South Beaver Creek Road in Beaver Creek. Thanks for the opportunity. I want to talk about the section in the ordinance itself and its section 4.04.060, the use of the proceeds. The statute, Oregon Statute 801.041, Terms and Conditions for Imposition of the Registration Fee by County, sets out the terms for this registration fee. What's not in that is the part here that talks about, "As well as to repay any bonded indebtedness incurred for the fore-said purposes," under that section. Number one, ORS 801.041 makes no mention of bonded indebtedness. Two, it contains no express authorization for incurring indebtedness of any kind. Three, it does not authorize repaying any bonded indebtedness from fees collected. Four, an authorizing provision must explicitly empower or sanction the incurring of bonded indebtedness. An explicit provision is one whose meaning and effect are clear and unambiguous, expressed and not implied. What is the authority other than 801.041 for this section of the ordinance? And I'd like that in writing, or maybe county council could explain that, "explicit provision." Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening, and we'll get the answer to you in a minute.
Okay. Do I have some more time?
No. Oh, yes, 22 seconds.
Okay. You know, there's also not a severability clause in the ordinance, and it's my opinion only that this is going to pass, and it's going to be challenged. With that language, with the indebtedness and incurring bonded indebtedness, that is very ripe for legal challenge. There's no authority for it. So if you could get me the authority, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Yes, Commissioner Bernard.
Actually, county council, you know, we're not actually planning on bonding this. Somebody else would bond for it, correct? We're not writing a check or bonding in this county for those dollars.
Certainly. My name is Scott Sedaris. I am one of your attorneys. I have not yet been identified to this group. And to give the answer to your question, I'd have to say, Commissioner Bernard, I simply don't know. I know that we can't do anything without the ordinance as to what's the most cost-effective way to go next, bonded debt, no bonded debt. I simply don't know for sure. Part of it is we don't know what's going to happen... Part of it is we don't know what's going to happen in the bond market now as a result of some of the changes that are occurring and whether it be in the county's best interest to float its own bond or go with Multnomah County.
But those are terms still to be negotiated in an IGA that we could spell out.
Exactly. If the board would be interested in me guessing at the answer, I could continue further, but it would be the caveat that it would be a guess.
Thank you. And we'll get Kevin his answers as the rest of the questions that will be raised this evening, like we did in the last one, up on the web as soon as possible. So thank you. All right, I've got two folks up next. Lieutenant Robert Powell, is that correct? And Joan Greenman.
My name is Lieutenant Robert Powell. I will be speaking slightly slower because I had facial reconstruction surgery. I personally do not believe that the economic issues that are current today would necessitate the idea of a quarter of a mile of light rail and the manipulation of this money for other projects. I do believe that your council needs to investigate bonding in such a manner that this money issue is closed. I'm not so sure legally that we can do cross-county without metro. We're a sovereign county, even though we're a little bit weird as a county. I don't believe that this necessitates supporting money that has been previously spent by our city of Portland and Multnomah County on other issues that it certainly could have used to deal with this Ross Island Bridge in a timely manner. Someone else's economic stupidity does not put us in a position of needing to bail their tails out. I appreciate very much your time and if this does not get felt and done by the county council, who actually works for the people of the county and not the county commissioners, that a grand jury be brought forward or something such as that to make sure that this money... I'm not saying that Ross Island does need to be fixed, but it should have been fixed a long time ago. We need to look at bill fees and some office if we start playing with cross-county jurisdictions. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Ms. Greenman. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joan Greenman. I live at 19751 South Ferguson Terrace in Oregon City. Before I begin, I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of the several staff and the Director of the Department of Transportation, Cam Gilmore, all who were very polite, prompt, and tried to get the information that we requested. Unfortunately, they weren't successful. We had requested the traffic studies used to make the prediction that 70% of the Sellwood traffic either originated or terminated in Clackamas County. It seems as though, if that work exists, it is well-hidden as only the results of that were forthcoming. Absent those studies, it seems impossible to confirm that 70% assertion. And finally, even if we accept that 70% figure, the number applies to vehicles, cars, trucks, and buses. It certainly doesn't apply to pedestrians or bicycles. Given that, why would Clackamas County residents be asked to pay for anything more involved than a rehabilitation of the existing bridge, as a rehabilitated bridge would continue to serve vehicles very well? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Scott Oldham and Jeff Bernards are up next. Good evening.
Good evening.
Scott?
The Oregon State Building and Construction Trades Council is in support of the Clackamas County's proposed VRF as a method of funding the replacement of the Sellwood Bridge. We understand the sentiment against fee increases of any kind in times like this. However, the structure serves as a vital link in the transportation system and the economy of North Clackamas County where a large portion of the county's population lives. This same area produces taxes that go into the county's treasury for roads and other services that everyone relies on to get to work, the doctor, school, and other travels of everyday life. Were not for the business activity and resources made possible by the Sellwood Bridge, Clackamas County would simply be that much poorer and limited in its ability to provide an environment that promotes employment and commerce. The commissioners have taken a brave and responsible position and that they are willing to do what is best for Clackamas County and should be commended. There is much to be lost if the transportation link is allowed to be closed. Thousands of jobs will be created and millions of dollars will be injected into the local economy from the construction phase, but there is also the possibility of more. Replacement of this bridge is one of three river crossings scheduled in our area, the others being the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail and the Interstate Bridge. If the components, like steel, concrete, et cetera, of the Sellwood Bridge can come from local manufacturers, they should be in a good position to supply components for the Interstate Bridge, also which would bring more money into the local economies. As unpalatable as an idea it is to have this fee, the county and all the people living in it have much to gain by passing it and much to lose economically by not passing it. In closing, our members are in favor of funding this bridge and the roads in front of each and every one of your homes.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hi. I wrote this after reading a few articles in the paper and stuff, so it's a little excitable, but I'll read it. So I'm here today to support the commission for voting for the $5 registration fee to be used to help replace the Sellwood Bridge. I just want to express my frustration with the special interest group, Americans for Prosperity. I want to say that they don't represent me. I'm an American and I want prosperity. I've had my own business for 38 years. I understand business. Public facilities paid by everyone and used by everyone is an important link to commerce. Multnomah County residents are paying nearly four times the proposed fee, the $5 you're being asked to pay. I think we've more than picked up our share of the bridge. I find that the organization is spending the time and money fighting these little skirmishes over $5, they'll never really prosper. I personally can't remember the last time I crossed the Sellwood Bridge. I live in Portland. If you want to protest wasteful spending, maybe we should talk about the bridge to nowhere in Alaska that was paid for and never built and the money never returned to the treasury if they really want to save, talk about wasteful spending. From what I gather from the media, there's a big swell of support for charging bicyclists. Does that mean you're going to charge school-aged children too who ride bikes? If you think cyclists are getting a free ride, then get on the bike and enjoy the free ride. You'll find it a lot different from the saddle. Bicyclists not directly paying for the bridges or roads isn't the cause of this country's $14 trillion debt. They're proposing that we pay for the bridge. The commission here is proposing that we pay for the bridge. That's a positive step for government. Instead of them borrowing money, they're actually wanting to pay their way. I think it's time that we should congratulate them for some much-needed fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Is my time up? I got to...
Yeah. Thank you. Much appreciated. Next two, William Wer and Charles Patrick. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board for this opportunity to speak. My name is William Wer. I reside at 14754 Southeast Y East Avenue in Damascus, Oregon. My wife and I have owned and lived in that home since 1976. I've been in the mortgage banking field for over 30 years. I have come to oppose the increase in vehicle registration fees for the Sellwood Bridge. A number of my friends, neighbors, and acquaintances through business have told me of their own personal financial problems. Some have lost their businesses, jobs, cutbacks in hours. This has resulted in some losing their homes or trying to modify the payments to keep their homes. Additionally, property taxes go up each year while residential property values are continuing to go down. I know this is something you're already aware of. I believe that Clackamas County should adapt the discipline that countless citizens, including myself, have already been practicing in their own lives by discarding or cutting down expenses and not handing expenses. When some project is deemed necessary by the county government, the means of funding should come from wasteful, bloated, or non-performing government programs already in place, not additional fees or taxes from us. Again, I urge you to vote no on the increase in registration fees. The citizens of Clackamas County should not pay for a Multnomah County project. We should not be forced to take shared ownership of the bridge. We should not have to bail out Multnomah County by burdening us with more expense. We've had enough of our own taxes and fees to pay. Thank you.
Thanks. Charles?
My name is Charles Patrick. Live at 26600 South Hobel in Estacada. You go through the boonies, up past the hicks, and the second hillbilly that shoots at you would be me. I'm a recovering alcoholic addict with 23 years sobriety. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I've lived in the streets of Portland. I've had small businesses. You could say I've been around the block three or four times. This is all an education that makes me uniquely qualified to say that this is bovine maneuver. There are too many details on the bridge that negate it and we could build another bridge. If you wanted a real lifeline, two lanes isn't a lifeline between the communities. You extend 224 or 212 on across, goes through the Country Club, or you go down at Courtney Drive, looks like a good spot from Google, but build something else. This is not, it's not a lifeline that you want to spend that much money to make it earthquake-proof for bike lanes. $250, $250 million for bike lanes. Close road off to regular traffic and use it for a bike bridge. Bottom line is, we do not trust you with our money. And if you do not at least put this up for a vote, we will. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, I'm going to call up Kelvin McKinnis and Steve Lawhead. Kelvin?
I'm Kelvin McKinnis. I'm the Vice President of the Oregon State Building, Trades, and Construction Council. I have for you a letter from John Mullis, our Executive Secretary. Chair Peterson and Commissioners, I'm sorry I cannot attend this meeting in person. I appreciate the fact you are having these hearings and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to share some testimony. The Oregon Building, Construction, Trades Council is an umbrella organization for approximately 30,000 union construction workers throughout the state of Oregon. Unfortunately, our members are currently, on average, 30% unemployed. Our organization and our members are fully in support of the proposed vehicle registration fee increase. This is a small amount to pay for such an important project that brings so many benefits to our members, Clackamas County residents, and our region. This project would not only put our members to work, but also will employ people in the design and engineering field and local material suppliers. Money these workers earn will go back into the local economy immediately, helping support Main Street businesses. These workers will also pay taxes to support important public services, such as law enforcement, firefighters, and teachers. We all know the Sellwood Bridge is in serious state of disrepair. Every day that this is not addressed is another day that we are risking a disaster such as the tragic bridge collapse in Minnesota. I cannot overemphasize our strong support of this fee proposal and the bridge replacement project. I respectfully urge you to take the steps necessary to move this project forward. It is the right thing to do for our unemployed members, local design and supplier firms, Clackamas County residents, and the region at large. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me at any time. Sincerely, John Mullis, Executive Secretary, Oregon State Building and Construction Trades Council. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
My name is Steve Lawhead. Live at 19125 Southwest Longfellow. Everyone understands that when the economy is in a free fall and you lose your job or your hours have been cut back and your income has been greatly reduced, that you must cut back on your expenditures. That is an economic fact. You can learn that in Echo 101. I know that Clackamas County has tried to cut back some, but I'm here to tell you that what you've done is a drop in a bucket. You must get more serious about cutting expenditures and, yes, furloughing, lowering wages and laying off some of the county employees. According to the Sandy Post, in 2009, there were 90 Clackamas County employees that took home more than $100,000 in salary, not counting benefits. The top county wage earners were psychiatrists who earned more than $189,000. Their 2009 base salary is now $195,626. Meanwhile, another 60 county employees, many in the Sheriff's Department, took home more than $90,000. Not only do salaries seem high, but in some cases, overtime goes beyond salaries, such as a 9/11 dispatch shift leader whose base salary is about $58,000 but who earned an additional and came home with $91,000 in overtime during the last fiscal year. There's another 175 county employees that earned a five-digit income just for overtime above their base salary. Now, let's talk about the latest expansion of light rail. It's costing $557 million. The Green Line, the Clackamas County Town Center, was completed almost a year ago. There's been no notable surge in business activity, investments, or job creation as county officials predicted. However, there is a surge in light rail-related crime. County commissioners committed $25 million for our share of the $1.5 billion Portland-to-Milwaukee Light Rain Project. Soon, TriMet will build what is likely to be another conduit for crime in Milwaukee.
You want to work up?
I've got a lot more to say, but that's it.
You can totally submit that since it's all written down and Mary can take it from you and we'll have the full thing then. Thank you. Next two folks are Linda Eskridge and Greg Nelson. May Greg leave? Go ahead.
Okay. My name's Linda Eskridge and I live at 13943 South Herman Road in Malala. Why do we even bother attending the charade that is public comment? I began to get involved when you decided to pass tree ordinance with the majority of public comment against it and your own staff not recommending it. Who could have guessed? Now I sit here again, testifying before you on a vehicle registration fee increase. The controversy swirls around, giving another jurisdiction $22 million to build a new bridge. The fact that the Sellwood Bridge can be fixed for $50 million, but what the hell? Let's build a new two-lane bridge for $340 million. This is a great bureaucratic use of scarce resources. Then I hear words about, well, if there's money left over, it will go to another project, light rail to Milwaukee, which benefits Clackamas how? Oh, and since there is no sunset clause and the next use of the money generated will be to fund some other future project, maybe we should build a light rail to the beach or better yet, a bike path to Seattle and extend it south to San Francisco. Then for the next project, the $5 fee won't be enough. So you can just increase the fee to $43 with no further public input. The truth here is that you, our county commissioners, have already made your external commitments and agreements regarding this bridge issue. This is all just a charade to make the citizens of Clackamas County believe that you care about their wishes. The proof is in your actions. Is it true that one of you commissioners told the Malala City Councilor of the Malala City, if he doesn't go along with this vehicle registration fee increase, that the city of Malala would not get any transportation funds? I have it on the video of a Malala City Councilor making that statement in a public council meeting. Just like the government agencies that rule and regulate us above you, all the way to our dear executive legislative branch, you know best and really don't care what we say or want. Thank you.
Next, Greg.
Good evening. My name is Greg Nelson. I'm a 30-year resident of Clackamas County. I live at 62 Weatherstone Court in Lake Oswego. I feel, as many people do, that the cross-county support from Clackamas County for the Multnomah County Bridge is a dangerous precedent. In my opinion, the residents of Clackamas County should provide support for a bridge in Multnomah County when Multnomah County provides support for Clackamas County schools, Sheriff's Department, Humane Society, and other agencies. By endorsing this proposal, the commissioners of Clackamas County... By endorsing this proposal, the Commissioners of Clackamas County would be showing the same type of leadership that Sam Adams is showing in Portland with his leaf collection fee. In other words, very weak support. I urge you to listen to the citizens of Clackamas County and not support this fee. If Multnomah County cannot afford this bridge on its own, they should not build it. And if they need, if they need the money, they should provide tolls to provide the revenue, I urge you not to support additional fees on Clackamas County residents who seldom if ever use the bridge. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. I'll call up the next two folks, Thomas Hickman and Sally Douglas.
My name is Sally Douglas, and I live out in Canby. And I just want to say that I don't think anyone here denies the fact that the bridge needs to be replaced. But I've also lived in Clackamas County for thirty years and have probably only used that bridge maybe a dozen times. And, you know, they talk about the surveys, and they're saying that 70% of the vehicles that cross that bridge come from Clackamas County. How come we don't have a survey on how many bicycles go across that bridge? And I don't mean children, because you know very well, as we all know, that the vast majority of bicycles that are buzzing around are adults. And yet, they pay nothing for the privilege of having bike paths and a section on this new bridge. And even in Canby, where we just have street work done, there's an allotment for bicycle paths, and yet, they pay nothing. And we all know, too, that the registration fee will not be limited to $5, because I'm quite sure that most of people here would not be here quibbling over $5, as the other fellow said. But it won't end up being $5. And the thing that is so annoying, I think, to most of us is the simple fact that, you know, we elect you guys, and then you guys sit and do what you please. And you know what? I didn't notice that there was a crown on anybody's head or a throne that you guys were sitting in. And yet, when you get up there, you all act like you guys are in complete charge, and we're just merely the servants. And it's the other way around. We pay your salaries. And as such, to have something else added to it is ridiculous, whether it's $5 or $2. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to not- Hold on, Thomas. Thank you. I appreciate that. As I, I just want to repeat the rules, because this is what happens, is we will extend the hearing a lot, and we will not be able to hear testimony if we continue to have that kind of noise. As I say, you were doing so well with the hand raising, I would appreciate if you would continue with that. Thank you. All right, Thomas.
Commissioners, Madam Chairman, thank you for listening to me tonight. I come to you wearing three hats. One, I'm employed by Oregon Iron Works, a local Clackamas County business. Two, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce. And three, I'm a 33- to 35-year resident of Clackamas County. First, as a professional in the bridge-building business, I've been involved for over 25 years. I can tell you that this bridge desperately needs to be replaced. The bridge in Minneapolis that was spoken of before was a 50 on the scale of 1 to 100, and it failed catastrophically. We need to, as a community, join together and replace this bridge. We have a responsibility to do that. So I would encourage you to vote yes. As a member of the Board of Directors for North Clackamas County Chamber, we have come out in support of this as well as a chamber, because we believe it is good for business, it's good for local business, and it's good for employment. Third, as a member of the community, I believe that if I can buy a bridge for $5 a year, I've got a bargain. And I am in support of that from a personal standpoint. And that, Madam, is my testimony.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming in. All right, I'm going to have a hard time with this last name, but I think it's Soliards, Mr. Soliards? Just from the, and then Adair Miller?
My name is Eileen Soliards, 29300 Southeast Lariat Lane, Borin, Oregon, 97009. I came ill-prepared, but here are my notes. The very poorest will be egregiously taxed. Where is the rest of the traffic, since it's now metered, going? Fiscal responsibility would dictate that you save your money until you have enough to take care of the problem. Give the bridge to the bikers and send the traffic elsewhere until you have the money to fix it. After it's fixed, save money until you can replace it. Let North Clackamas pay if they want. I myself have lived here all my life. I have used the bridge that I can remember twice in my 68 years, and I'm sure my mother did not drive me over it. Even if my memory is bad, which is, I'm sure I didn't use it more than five times. I could have gone around. Those of us who have no business on that bridge, going to or from, and there are many of us, please, we should not be taxed. Who covers the overage if it's more money than what is estimated? What do we in- Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have any questions that you want to submit to the Clerk, Mary, you can do that. Thanks. Right, Adair.
Chair Peterson and Commissioners, thank you for giving me the chance to speak with you tonight, representing, I believe, a somewhat different perspective. My name is Adair Miller. I'm too close to the mic.
Can you pull it closer?
Too close, too far away.
Too far away.
I'm used to the legislature, not, so my first time in the county. I have personal reasons for wanting to see this project go forward. The Sellwood Bridge provides access to communities and businesses on the east side of the Willamette River. Without the Sellwood Bridge, it would be necessary for me to drive the whole way down, the Oregon City Bridge, which is soon to be closed, or to the Ross Island Bridge. This means lost time and excess fuel. From a personal perspective, I support the very modest $5 addition to the vehicle registration fee to support the construction of a new, safe bridge. From a more global perspective, and excuse me if I'm redundant, several of the previous speakers have taken my ideas and made them their own, so I'm going to reiterate. The Sellwood Bridge is critical to 70% of the folks who cross the Sellwood Bridge daily, going to and from jobs and accessing businesses and services on both the east and west side of the river. These trips either begin or end in Clackamas County. For this reason, the Sellwood Bridge is a critical part of the infrastructure supporting the economy of the county. And finally, the Sellwood Bridge is a regional asset used by more than its owners. It's in the best interest of Clackamas County to financially support the construction of this new, safe bridge. The funding mechanism is a modest way for us to provide our fair share to support the best interests of the region. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right, I think it's Carolyn Beckstrom, Backstone? Apologize. Good evening. Name and address in two minutes. Thanks.
Carolyn Beckstrom, Canby, Oregon. You were voted by the people of Clackamas County. When they voted, they did so for you to represent all of us. You have chosen to represent the voters of Portland, which is in Multnomah County. If you want to represent Multnomah County, I suggest you resign and take a current, take a seat, or run for a seat in Multnomah County. We, the voters of Clackamas County, deserve the right to vote on any issue that steals our money, especially when you are giving it to another county who cannot control their financial responsibilities. Thank you.
All right, Laura.
Yes, I'm Laura Ferris. I live at 300 Stowers in Malala. And right now, I'm not really seeing the priority. I understand the bridge needs to be repaired, but from the Fremont Bridge to the Sellwood Bridge, that's a 5.4-mile stretch of the Willamette River that has nine bridges to cross over into Portland. Why do we have to put so much money into the Sellwood Bridge in this economy? I attended the Q&amp;A session in Malala, in which Ann Leininger attended back in October. And you were asked at that time about this bridge, and I quote, you stated, "I would support Clackamas investment in that repair work if I am convinced the project was designed as cost-efficiently as possible." So I'm asking you, are you really convinced? You also went on to say that you should only proceed with this if you had the support of Clackamas County. From what I'm understanding, this was your quote that night there. From what I'm seeing here from the support of Clackamas County tonight, it's not there. Your support's coming from Multnomah, most of the people that are coming up here. Right now, I need to register my vehicle. It's $86. A few years ago, it was only $42 to register. So I'm wondering, when will this end? I also ask, have you not noticed the number of foreclosed homes in the county? Most recently, the current number is 3,413 foreclosed homes. The unemployment rate is going up, and there's long lines at the food banks. And I'm wondering where you think the extra money's going to come from? If you vote this in, then none of you are any better than the Washington Congress that pushed through the Obamacare regardless of popular opinion. You have a reputation for meeting behind closed doors, scheduling public meetings at times when many are unable to attend, and pass what you feel regardless of what your constituents want. Thank you.
William Ferris and Donna Salvata.
I just got off work, I'm kind of dirty, sorry. Didn't have time, you know.
William.
Hi, I live in Malala, Oregon. I'm, at this time, opposed to the, you know, the bridge being replaced. I think it's foolish to, if it's going to be replaced, to be replaced there. I've been, I used to drive over the bridge, the job I used to have, in the bottleneck traffic, you're sitting in it, and sitting in it, and sitting in it. So if it's going to be replaced, don't, for goodness sake, don't replace it there. You know, take it south of Sellwood. I know, $5 a year is not that much, but I agree with the other people I've spoken. You know, where does it end? You know? From what I understand, we're going to get a $40 increase on our registration fees every two years, you know? And it keeps going up, and then, once it's paid for, it's there. It never goes away. My wages have gone down, my, you know, shoot, it's pretty tough. So, you know, keep the bridge. Use it for pedestrians and bikes, and in the future, when we're prospering more, yeah, I'll support funding for a bridge then. But right now, we're not doing so great, you know? The economy's pretty tight right now. But again, if you're gonna, if we're gonna replace the bridge, I think it'd be foolish to replace it there, you know? Divert it south to where people can cross the bridge and go this way or that way into town. But to replace it there, stupid, in my opinion. What else, you know? So anyway, again, my wife, she mentioned there's nine bridges in a 5.4-mile stretch of the Willamette River, starting, anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for keeping to two minutes, I appreciate that. Donna?
Hi, I'm Donna Salvata, and I live in Milwaukee. I've never come to one of these meetings, but I'm so outraged, I finally did. And basically, I'm just tired of this. You know, everyone keeps saying it's just a little $5 fee. No, it's not. We all know it's going to be more. And the other thing is, in partnering with Multnomah County, what we're doing is covering another county's lack of leadership and prioritizing. That's all we're doing. That's crazy. I can't, I can't cover somebody else's debt and somebody else's mistakes. Why should, you know, why should we be doing this? And also, I just am really angry that this is being called a stimulus thing, because taking more money from citizens to build a bridge and calling it stimulus is absurd. You're taking it from struggling citizens who are losing jobs, homes, et cetera. These are the people you want to pay the construction company that hires the people to do the job. It's my money that's paying for this, even if it's only five bucks. But I've got four vehicles. Well, it's 20. Now, let's see, if it goes up to 40, like it probably, you know, will, that's 40 times four, we're not talking five bucks. All right, this is not some little project. And the economy is just not doing well enough to keep going with this. Somebody's got to put some brakes on and use some common sense. And it's just a redistribution of my money. You want my money so you can redistribute it for a project that somebody else should have taken care of a long time ago. So, I mean, that's it. I'm mad. I don't want this to happen. I've got enough bills to pay without having to pay an extra how much more for, you know, all my little old cars. I don't have new cars, they're old, but still, I'm going to have to pay. So, and I'm sure there's a lot more people like me, too, that have more than one car. This is not a $5 fee. And plus, I don't like the idea of it, you know, of us helping somebody who's, you know, blown it. Let them, let them handle their own problem. I don't use the bridge. I've been here 15 years. I think I've used the bridge a total of four times. And I bet there's a lot of other people that have that same story. How many people here have used that bridge? That's it. Thanks.
Thanks for coming in. Dan Holliday and Dick Jaskiel. I just want folks to know that we're about halfway through the 60 folks that signed up to testify. So we've got about another hour, just so you know, in terms of your own time.
Well, I'll only take two minutes. I've been a manager of employees for many years throughout my career, and I've never been in the habit of thanking him for the opportunity to speak with him, and I see no reason to start now. Just to be clear, you work for us, the citizens of Clackamas County, not the city of Portland, not Metro, not the region, or the state. Ms. Peterson likes to throw around the buzzword transparency. Well, it's transparent that the decision to tax the people of our county to pay for Portland's bridge was made long ago, and it's also transparent that no matter how many average citizens testify against this boondoggle, you will pass this tax. Many of you have spoken about how money is going to be saved on this project, and that money will be used for light rail, which the people of the county have also opposed. I ask you, what in the city of Portland's record would lead you to believe that a project can commit under budget? The tram, which was almost double the estimate by the time it was done, maybe the two computer upgrades, which have succeeded almost the same way, and the big pipe project, which is now millions and millions of dollars over budget. The city of Portland and its alleged planners let this bridge fall into disrepair for, so much for planning. The only thing that liberal socialists like Ms. Peterson plan for is how to take more of our money to spend on their pals who ride bikes and who represent less than 2% of the transportation public. You folks purposely delayed this hearing until after the election, because you knew that you could not reelect it if you passed this before the election. So now, let me tell you what we, the people of the county, will do. I have in my possession papers to file a referendum for when you pass this tax. And since we will be gathering, collecting signatures, I also have recall petitions for Ms. Peterson, Ms. Leehan, and Mr. Bernard. Ms. Liniger-
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Dan, I'm going to have to ask you to stop for a minute, and I'm going to ask the clock to stop. And I'm going to ask everybody to just sit here and wait, because I'm just going to wait until we all understand that we're trying to get through, and we all have a diverse set of opinions. And I've, this is the third time that I've asked that you not extend the time by clapping. We cannot hear if you're clapping. Thank you. Dan, will you proceed? Thank you.
Ms. Liniger, as you were not an incumbent, you get a pass under state law for 180 days, but make no mistake that that does not make you immune from the wrath of the taxpayers of the county. Finally, you have stated this will only be a $5 vehicle tax, yet you have scheduled meetings with cities- meetings with cities to discuss how to get more for their pet projects as well. This reminds me of a line from the movie Air Force One. If you give a mouse a cookie, he's going to want a glass of milk. While you are the mouse, this tax is the cookie. My question is, what is the milk going to cost? Make no mistake, if you pass this tax, we will remove you from office and get leaders who actually listen to the people of Clackamas County.
All right. Dick, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dick Jaskiel. I live on Theeason Road, 5706 Southeast Theeason in Milwaukee. I am 100% opposed to this vehicle registration fee increase. I strongly believe that each county is responsible for its own assets. If Clackamas County pays for Multnomah County assets, either to maintain or create new assets in Multnomah County, a terrible precedent is set, and other payments to different counties or other jurisdictions become possible. Clackamas County residents have no voting representation regarding Multnomah County Commissioners. Those Multnomah County Commissioners are responsible for managing their own county assets. If they cannot do that job, Multnomah County voters should elect financially competent Commissioners. Now, I'm not here to just look at the negative side of things. As part of a potential solution, I would suggest that you end, stop, this light rail madness going to Milwaukee. The amount of money that is budgeted for this light rail project would more than cover so many worthwhile transportation, transportation maintenance and new construction projects, pedestrian, bike, bridge, road, and improved bus service. The light rail money is a terrible waste, a terrible mismanagement, and I urge you to do what you can to stop that project as well. Thank you.
Right. We've got Art Scovola and Kathy Kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Art Scovola. I live in Lake Oswego, Oregon, 19 years. I'm going to speak as a private citizen, but I do want you to understand that I lead a group of about several hundred, at least, people within Clackamas County that would be 98%, I'm sure, against this. And as such, I would put that on record and stand by it if questioned. Now, having said that, I'd like to do ditto's right away for Dan Halliday, who was just up here, and also for Mary Olson, our city councillor from Lake Oswego, who spoke earlier and represented herself as she should have been in the prior hearing. Just as a reminder, this tax proposal is directed towards funding a project that exists due to the blatant neglect and malfeasance of inappropriate public funding that has been the responsibility exclusively of the elected officials of Multnomah County. Why your expectation of a limited fee, also known as a tax, to provide a greatly limited solution is at best naive and at least a fragrant abuse of the will of the people of Clackamas County who elected you to your jobs. We, the taxpayers, are the party to this, and we're being held hostage, to use the President's words, to a plan that would tax us for other people's responsibilities and other people's usage. As far as the economic stimulus, give this bridge to the bikers, which is exactly what Multnomah County would like to do anyway. It's a limited situation with the way it's going to be reconstructed. From what I can tell, it's not going to serve as a traffic increase or a reduction. I come in from Portland every other day, and I see the traffic lined up to go across that bridge, and it's a nightmare. And if it's not built into a four-lane bridge for automobiles, it's going to continue to be a nightmare, and you can't do it with what you're asking for, anyway.
I ask you to wrap up. Oh, excuse me, Art, I did have one question. What organization were you representing?
The Oregon 912 Project.
Thank you. All right, Kathy Kitchen? Are you still here?
No.
Okay. Tom Hester and Dan Wagner. Tom?
Yeah, I'm Tom Hester, 206-91, South Highway 213 in Oregon City. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to address this issue. This is only the second time I've ever attended such a hearing, the first being the one held on November 21st, or 24th, concerning the same subject. By the end of that meeting, it was abundantly evident that the conflict was settled. Virtually no member of Clackamas County's tax-paying constituency, save a few politicians from other government forums, was in favor of yet another tax or fee, particularly for a bridge that belongs to a different county and a light rail system that does not deliver value anywhere near its cost. It seemed obvious that there was no need to discuss it any further. Yet, here we are again, because the Board somehow sees merit in spending millions of our dollars on projects that benefit very few of us at the expense of all of us. The Commissioners act in accordance with an apparent attitude that their wisdom trumps that of the collective wisdom of its constituents. In short, this looks like crony capitalism by professional politicians who tolerate but do not embrace their public. Commissioners, just because a recent change in the law gives you a prerogative to levy a new tax or fee does not mean it's the right thing to do. People are suffering under this economic drought. Asking, indeed demanding, to dip more out of their buckets in order to fund special projects at times such as these is just wrong. Yet, even if these were the best of financial times, helping to fund the Sellwood Bridge or run more light rail where it is not wanted or needed is just wasteful. I urge you, therefore, to quash this whole idea of adding yet another burden to your already strained constituency. Please, can the plan and quit taking our scarce dollars for feel-good projects.
Dan?
Yeah, everybody just calls me the Mercury Man. I live on the corner of Park and Oldfield Road in Milwaukee. And first of all, I just want to start out by saying that I try to avoid going into Portland, if at all possible, simply because who's running it? But I have yet to see any of these fees that have ever been applied to us ever get dropped or ever sunset. They just keep going up. Once, once you cut the foot in the door, that's it. I think it's kind of silly to ask us to build a bridge, which isn't going to accommodate the traffic that is going to go across the bridge, and you're not going to build that, you're not going to repair that, but you'll build a brand-new light rail bridge coming in Milwaukee that nobody wants in the first place. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Not a single car is going to go over that light rail bridge. And if you are going to charge us a $5 fee per car, I, myself, I can say, I would only agree to it under one term, one condition. Buy as many Jersey barriers as possible, put them on the Multnomah County, Clackamas County line. Thank you.
All right. So Cheryl McGinnis and Mary Ellie? And then, I did accidentally, I apologize, Ms. Alan Gross. And Alan, I'll call you up in two seconds, well, after four minutes. Cheryl?
Hi, I'm Cheryl McGinnis, resident of Clackamas County and from West Lynn. I'm here to speak in favor of the registration fee as proposed, for a couple reasons. One being the economic value to Clackamas County as identified today. We know that a majority of the vehicles coming to, crossing the bridge are coming to and from Clackamas County. That's at 70%, while Clackamas County's portion of the cost of the bridge is 7%. That's a value to Clackamas County. Another reason is because of that vital link between the west and east side of the Willamette River, being on the northern end of our county. It's an important link both now for those cars that are traveling, as identified by the 70%, but also in the case of an emergency. This bridge will provide for a continuity of transportation routes in the event of an emergency, based on it conforming to standards of a 500-year seismic event. That's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
My name is Mary Ellie, 16106 Hunter Avenue, Oregon City. My husband and I run a small business. We're a sign company, and we depend on other businesses for our income, because they're the ones who purchase from us. Things are not going well, and we're really seriously considering moving to Texas, where there's actually a decent business climate. Now, I'm old enough to remember when Neil Goldschmidt stole the Mount Hood Freeway and instead gave us the wonderful choo-choo. That was the first time in my life that I ever saw an astounding government overreach. Sadly, it is not the last. At that time, we were told that there was no election needed, because everybody knew how the election would come out. Well, yeah, we sure did. That's why there was no election. Well, we didn't know what to do, and so we let it slide. And as a result, we've seen this over and over and over again. But now, we do know what to do. And if you vote for this, this fee that will be raised and raised, there will be a referendum, and we will work to replace each and every one of you who vote for it with someone who will be more careful with our money. Thank you very much.
All right. Alan Grosso and Robert Camerillo? Camerillo?
Camarillo.
Camarillo. I'll just keep working. Alan?
Thank you. I'm Alan Grosso. I'm at 12100 Southeast 158th Avenue, Happy Valley. I just would like to remind everybody, and the Commissioners especially, that we have seen a 187% increase in our state vehicle registration fees in the last seven years. It went from $30 to $54 in 2003, and that bill was supposed to pay for bridge repairs all through the state of Oregon. And I believe the Sellwood Bridge was part of that package. And then the transportation bill of 2009, the fees went from $54 to $86. 187% increase in just seven years. And the people who are saying, well, this is just a $5 fee, you know what? After listening to this kind of justification from politicians for the last 50 years, I now give away almost 60% of my income to government. So $5 here, $5 there, that's all we've been hearing. And everybody in this room has stated, stated very well that this fee will not stay at $5. And the insanity of replacing a bridge at $330 million without any increase in traffic capacity is exactly the type of waste of transportation resources that is endemic in this region and reflects the flawed thinking of our transportation leaders. I would also like to just make one last statement. I really do resent those people from Multnomah County who came to this commission tonight to testify to stick a fee on Clackamas County residents.
All right. I'm going to ask you not, we're going to go ahead and testify for the next person.
My name is Robert Camarillo. I live at Vine Street, Oregon City. I'm here on behalf of all the ironworkers, especially the members that live in Clackamas County that do use the bridge every day. I use it at least once a week. You have our support. You guys are doing a great job. We appreciate the position you guys have taken on this issue. That's fine. If they want the old bridge, let them have the old bridge, but let's build a new one right next to it, and let's get this job going, put some people to work. That's all I got.
Thank you for coming in. Jim Gilbert and Larry Marsh.
Chair Peterson, I'm Jim Gilbert. I'm a small business owner and farmer from the Malala area. I'm very happy that you're having this hearing at a time when a lot of people can attend. I think it's very, very wise. I'm struck by the, some of the comments that are being made tonight. I'm a lifelong Oregonian, and my ancestors, I'm proud of my ancestors, who actually built all the bridges, paid to build all the bridges that we have now in Oregon, and all the roads and all the other infrastructure. And I'm really wondering, really, what the people want. If we're not going to invest in our infrastructure, what will happen? Are we going to go back to having ferries across the Willamette? Just what will occur? It's obvious that, I mean, I could tell you about all the reasons why I think replacing the bridge is a good idea. It's extremely important for our economy to have a vibrant economy. You have to have roads, you have to have bridges. People have to go to work. I have to carry my nursery stock across bridges. Trucks and buses need to travel across the Sellwood Bridge, which they can't do now. But when I first thought about this issue, I thought, you know, what a lifelong, what an opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to build a bridge. I would love to see a brand-new bridge built. I could take my grandkids there. We could ride bikes across it. We could walk across it. We can drive across it. And for the cost of this bridge, $5, which I call chump change, it's really, really nothing, you know? And so, I mean, most people probably paid that much to get here tonight, just to testify against it. So I would like to be one of the first to invest in it, and I'm going to put $5 up here. And that's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Larry?
Thank you for having the hearing. Perhaps I should take the $5 to help me pay my first installment. My name is Larry Marsh. I live in Colton, Oregon. I'm opposed to this fee increase because it's extremely unfair to the people that live in the rural areas. My arithmetic says that about 90% of the vehicles in Clackamas County will have no benefit from this increase. That's why I oppose it. If you, if you set a toll bridge or had some way of putting the cost on the people that actually use it, I can remember using the bridge once in 1961. The other thing that puzzles me is why the council is dealing with this $5 issue. It's been said many times, it's no big deal. Why would you spend your political capital on such a small issue when it probably will be brought to a vote of the people? And I think you're going to have a problem, from what I hear, I'm not an attorney, but I've read perspectives on bonds, and they have to show the funding. And to build a bridge, you're going to have to have bond issues, and there are going to have to be a prospectus, and people are going to have to buy those bonds. And unless there's a solid legal backing, you're in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. William?
I'm going to look at my attorney.
Okay. The $5 on the table there. The gentleman put it there and has offered to you. Are you going to accept it or not accept it?
That's not, no.
Are you going to accept it, should you vote, or what? What are you doing?
Eugene, that's not a point of order in terms of the terminology, and I'm going to ask Mr. Gilbert, while it was a very sweet offer to remove the $5 and keep it, and if this passes, use it for that, or for a latte, or a gallon of gas. Appreciate it, though, and we'll, we'll move on. William Ferris, and I'm going to attempt this last name, Edmund Pierschalla? Is that close?
Pierschalla.
William?
I'm Mr. Pierschalla.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Oh, you signed up twice?
I, I have my wife on this.
Okay. All right. Carol Tebow? Abel? Edmund?
Good evening. My name is Edmund Pierschalla. I live in Milwaukee, 2515 Southeast Harrison Street. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I oppose the new vehicle registration fee. Here is why. It is obvious that Sellwood Bridge is in sore need of repair and replacement, and I certainly didn't come here to argue that it isn't. It is not obvious that Clackamas County residents should foot a part of the bill, and reasons have been stated abundantly to support that. In your frequently asked questions document, you say, quote, "Road construction and repair costs have consistently increased while financial resources continue to decline," end quote. How is it possible, given this stark economic reality, for Clackamas County to charge ahead with costly new projects such as Milwaukee Light Rail? And reasons have been stated abundantly to support that. In your frequently asked questions document, you say, quote, "Road construction and repair costs have consistently increased while financial resources continue to decline," end quote. How is it possible, given this stark economic reality, for Clackamas County to charge ahead with costly new projects such as Milwaukee Light Rail? Are we in dire financial need, or do we have a surplus for new development? More than once, Milwaukee Light Rail has been mentioned in connection with this new fee. The light rail is not a necessity. Fixing Selwood Bridge is. Common sense dictates to look at necessary spending first. And if there is any money left, then consider additional optional projects such as the light rail. I urge you to stop the light rail before spending any more money on it, money we all do not have. Show us, your constituents, that you can manage the money you have before asking us for more. Money from the light rail could be used for much-needed repairs of the county infrastructure with no new fees necessary. In November, it was said that a toll for the bridge wouldn't work because most cars would drive away. Then it was said that the bridge is vital to the region and traffic can't really go anywhere else. Both points can't be true at the same time. Either the bridge is vital and people would pay to use it, or it is not. For example, 30,000 cars a day, 25 cents a car amounts to 2 points, more than 2.7 millions a year. Why is it not enough? Clackamas County citizens ought to have a choice in paying for Selwood Bridge. That choice can be provided either through a toll booth or a voting booth. Please stop increasing our fees and taxes without our choice. Thank you.
Carol.
My name is Carol Tebow, I live in Oak Grove. And I told you the last time I came before you that I moved here three years ago and felt so grateful that I landed in Clackamas County because what I saw of Multnomah County was not where I wanted to be. And now it appears we're getting married. And this really distresses me. When I have had, I have used the Selwood Bridge, I go across it once a week on my job. When I first moved here, I heard the horror stories about it. I prayed every time I went across it that it wouldn't collapse when I was on it. I thought, surely, you know, they were going to get right on this thing. And here it is, three years later, because of environmental impact studies? How much did that cost? Probably the 22 million. And what is there to study about putting another bridge across the same river? You know, this gets past me. And now, all of a sudden, we're being told that this whole bridge hinges on our $5? Something doesn't smell right here. My dearly departed husband recently, recently departed husband, always said, "Once you let the camel's nose in the tent, it's not long before his body is in." Just a cursory look at all this, I'm not well-versed, but it appears to me that you all granted yourself the authority to commingle our money and tax and projects with these other counties. It appears that in January, you have plans to sit down and discuss further projects. So, once that, you know, we didn't elect these people, they don't represent us, we have no leverage over those people. And once you mix all this, it's like those omnibus bills that Congress passes, you know? If you want my $5 for the Selwood Bridge, which I don't want to give it to you, but if you do, then I want to know it's for the bridge and not somebody, some other project. So, this whole thing, this whole thing smells, I'm sorry.
All right. Next up is Sue Marshall and Teri Parker.
Chair Peterson, members of the commission, my name's Sue Marshall. I reside at 15941 Southwest Inverroy Road in Lake Oswego. I'm here tonight representing the Clackamas County chapter of the Oregon League of Conservation Voters. We have over 500 members in Clackamas County and we're enthusiastically supportive of the $5 vehicle registration fee for the purpose of replacing Selwood Bridge. And we urge you to adopt this ordinance. Since I moved to Clackamas County in 1977, the safety of the Selwood Bridge has been an issue of public concern. There's no question that it needs to be replaced. There's no question that this replacement will significantly serve the citizens of Clackamas County. And indeed, it's long overdue and should not be delayed. The Selwood Bridge provides one of the few transportation corridors that links the east side with the west side of Clackamas County. Without this link, and as people have gone out of their way to avoid the bridge, it adds to vehicle miles, increases emissions, time is lost, and increases congestion on other roads. Bus service across the Selwood Bridge has been eliminated due to weight restrictions, loss of this bus line severed an economically and environmentally preferable transportation link between the west side of the county and the east side businesses and communities of Clackamas County. Any possible restoration of the bus line is dependent on replacement of the Selwood Bridge. And I would just add that the capacity actually would be increased even though it's just two lanes if you can increase the weight load, restore that bus line, have safe bicycle and pedestrian transportation. And then, just on a personal note, my son attends school in southeast Portland. He doesn't own a car, he relies on bicycle transportation. I feel like this very much puts him in harm when the Selwood Bridge is really one of the few options, really the only options, for a safely bicycling home. It's not often that the business community, labor, and the environmental community all line up on the same side of the issue. But as they have tonight, I think it's a very good indication that this is a good idea. And again, we urge your support. Thank you.
Thanks. Teri.
My name's Teri Parker. I'm a resident of northeast Portland. The question has been asked to why Clackamas County motor vehicle owners should contribute funding for a replacement Selwood Bridge, which is located in Multnomah County. The bigger question, however, is why are motorists being asked to shoulder the cost burden for a new bridge that with supersized sidewalks and bike lanes, has more deck space for bicyclists and pedestrians than it does for cars? Fairness and equity must require the cost be shared by all users, including establishing a local improvement district for neighborhoods that are within walking distance of the bridge and directly charging bicyclists a new fee. New sidewalks in Portland are often paid for with local improvement districts, and it is past due time to stop treating bicyclists like elitists with special privileges and immunities that allows them to continue acting like spoiled little children who expect mommy and daddy, in this case, other taxpayers, to pay for the specialized infrastructure they clamor for and exclusively use. Bicycles need to be required to pay license and registration fees. Moreover, there is a ludicrous concept to add streetcar tracks, increasing congestion, which in turn adds to the price tag of this project. Therefore, transit users too must require to chip in, possibly with a surcharge on transit fares. In that, it is a form of tax discrimination and an injustice to target only motorists with county-wide vehicle registration fees to raise the local dollars needed for this project. Before Clackamas County buys into this funding fiasco and considers a motor vehicle registration fee of its own, the county needs to establish a prerequisite equity condition whereby the users of all modes of transport must be required to pay their proportional share of the bridge funding package, in part to be based on the amount of deck space and infrastructure allocated for each mode of travel. Thank you.
Right. We've got John Lee and Keith Wright up.
Madam Chair Commissioners, my name is John Lee. I live in Boring, Oregon. I do represent myself, I'm a business owner, I'm an employer, and I'm also the chairman of the Republican, Clackamas County Republican Party. We've heard it all tonight, I don't need to repeat it, I'm tired, I just drove in from It's not $5. It's not our bridge. It's not our responsibility. If you do pass this, you know it will be referred. You know if it's referred and we get the signatures, you know it will lose. Don't go there. Thank you.
Keith.
Thank you, Chair Peterson, fellow commissioners. I have to say that I'm shocked by the opposition, the amount of opposition to something so basic as a bridge. A bridge we all use.
No.
Yes, we do. Everybody's got to be honest here.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to stop, Keith. And we're going to stop the clock. And again, somebody has a different opinion than yourself, that's fine. We all know that. I'm going to ask you not to make this a debate. We are listening to testimony. We are sitting here and respectfully listening to all of you. I very much appreciate that you all quieted down. All right. Go ahead, Keith.
Infrastructure isn't a cafeteria plan that you can pick from. I support this, but I don't support that. It's about building a system of lights, water, public safety, and transportation that supports all of us. Infrastructure is one of the things that made this country the number-one country in the world. China's investing in infrastructure on a daily basis. They just finished the state-of-the-art bullet train. They're building power plants at the rate of about one a month. And they've also built a world-class navy. What are we building? Not much. And I can see why. I don't know about you, but I'm not willing to give up America's number-one status. God forbid, but if it happens and the Selwood Bridge splashes into the Willamette River and we lose friends and families that happen to be on it when it does, another Minnesota moment, I hope that the shrill voices of no will be able to look themselves in the mirror and be comfortable with the position they've taken on this bridge. I have no problem investing in Oregon and America. Let's build this bridge. My guess is that many of the people in this room spent the better part of 10 bucks to do the round trip here tonight. Are we going to be blinded by the talking-point rhetoric while our infrastructure crumbles around us? That's not what America is made of, and that's not what made us great. I support the funding of this building and this project, and quite frankly, I don't think the joke of "Don't drive across the Selwood Bridge unless your window is down" is very funny. Also want to say I appreciate the work that the commissioners do and I support America's system of representative government. Thank you.
Got Tim McFarland, I believe, from Barlow Road in Canby, is that the right last name? And Christine Lewis. Oh, I'm sorry, Dwight Smith, I'm sorry, Christine. All right. Tim?
Hi, I'm Tim McFarland, Canby, Oregon. I oppose the $5 increase. I do not use the bridge, I don't want to use it, I haven't used it for 30 years. The county, you people up there are wasting our money trying to get this pushed through. Thank you.
Dwight.
I'm Dwight Smith, I'm from Canby as well. All of my issues have been mentioned several times tonight, but let's just look at one, and that's cost overruns. We have huge cost overruns on every project that is done by government. So, that means the $5 will not remain $5. It will have to grow. We already have a $40 million gap, is what I think I heard earlier. So, the $40 million gap is if the cost comes in exactly as has been quoted. But we know with cost overruns that it's going to go well above that. The $5 will change. And like has been earlier mentioned, our annual fees, cost fees for our cars, are going up at an astronomical amount. I think this is one place to help hold those in line, is by not getting Clackamas County involved in this. There may need to be a bridge built. Whether the current bridge that is being planned is the right bridge for the needs at this time, I don't know. I've heard a lot of things tonight that I hadn't heard previous on how many lanes and how wide the bike paths are going to be and so forth. But I believe what we really need is physical responsibility from our leadership. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Christine Lewis and Ron Sworn are the next two. And then, our last one that signed up is James Lee Hamilton. So, after Christine Lewis and Ron Sworn is the last one at James Lee Hamilton. All right, Christine.
Chair Peterson, members of the commission, thank you for taking public testimony tonight as well as tomorrow regarding the future of the Selwood Bridge, a main connector of East and West Clackamas County, a county I'm proud to call home. My name is Christine Lewis and I'm a resident of Milwaukee, outside of the Selwood Bridge Project Environmental Justice District Impact Study Area, but still quite close to that bridge. I'm here today speaking not only for myself, but also on behalf of the CERA Club and our members and activists across the county. I serve on the Executive Committee of the Columbia Group, and it's our, excuse me, our democratically elected board for the northwest bit of the state. The CERA Club supports the plan to improve the Selwood Bridge via a $5 vehicle registration fee for Clackamas car owners. The resulting upgrades will make the aging bridge safer and greener, bus-ready, and crossable by bike and foot. I live just two miles from the bridge, and despite being enthusiastic, yet fair-weather biker, have yet to cross the bridge by bike after seeing so many precarious and dangerous situations arise when bikers meet on the narrow path. Or worse yet, when bikers and pedestrians alike are forced to the far edge due to the speed of traffic flow. The heart of the matter is Clackamas County residents need this bridge. Over 70% of daily users are from Clackamas, and we are looking at a much-needed plan to get a safer bridge by adopting a fee that will amount to about 7% of total costs. This makes sense for the residents and businesses of Clackamas, and will help keep the county on track, ensuring safe and sound transportation choices between each of our cities and communities, while avoiding sprawl and development where it does not yet belong. Thank you again for opening this hearing tonight. Just want to let you know, I go over that bridge every day, sometimes more than I should, two, three, four, five times a day. And I don't want to be on that bridge when it goes down.
My name is Ron Sworn, I live in Selwood, about half-mile from the Selwood Bridge, and I was Transportation Chair on the Selwood Moreland Improvement League, and have been following the Selwood Bridge issue. I don't really have a fear that the Selwood Bridge is going to crumble or fall in, I've crossed it several thousand times probably in the 38 years I lived in Selwood. In this whole process, what I think I see missing is an expert evaluation of the structural integrity of the Selwood Bridge from someone who really knows what they're talking about. Anecdotal comments from people that are in some hysteria because some bridge collapsed 2,000 miles away doesn't really hold as accurate testimony. We need testimony from someone who actually knows the answers. The best thing that I've heard was at a J-PAC meeting where an ODOT bridge inspector did testify that he believed the Selwood Bridge was restorable. Multnomah County has restored other bridges for reasonable sums of money. The Hawthorne Bridge was restored for $22 million, it's very amenable to bicyclists. I doubt that you could talk anyone into tearing down the Hawthorne Bridge because it's 100 years old, which is 18 years older than the Selwood Bridge. The Ross Island Bridge and the St. John's Bridge, much larger than the Selwood Bridge, have been restored for under 50 million apiece. So, I would like to know how this project has gone into the 300 million-plus category. And so, I would understand the objection that people would have to various fees that might go to pay for it. However, living in Selwood, I do have another perspective in that any bridge there should be told so that people that are using it pay for it. A toll would probably pay for the bridge in rapid order, and also would stimulate some discussion as to what is the most financially agreeable plan for it. Thank you.
All right. James Lee Hamilton. Lynn, after this person, we should take a break, so they can switch.
Can I raise a point of order, please?
Steve, what's the point of order?
I signed up to testify, and I know I spoke earlier, but I have additional follow-up regarding the comments made by the commissioners from the last hearing. And I also was at a TRIMET hearing this morning, and there was Clackamas County issues discussed there by Portland. And I thought I'd carry those through, so if I could be allowed to speak after everyone's done, I appreciate it.
I'm going to look at our, I appreciate the comment, thank you. But it's not a point of order. These are not, it's not a hearing in terms of a judicial hearing. I'm going to ask our county council to talk about our ability to decide testimony and make sure that everybody has a chance and other opportunities.
Excuse me, here's a whole other page, because I signed up another 54, and if you're saying you're the last person, then you all have to miss.
Ms. Wince, we made the announcement at the beginning of the hearing that those who testified last time will not be testifying this evening. that those who testified last time will not be testifying this evening so that we can get through the folks that signed up this evening. I'm sorry if you missed that announcement. And I'm going to ask you to sit down now, thank you.
Chair Peterson, it is entirely within the discretion of this board at this time as to whether it chooses to take testimony. By that, I mean this is not a mandatory proceeding at all. We've had our first reading of the ordinance about almost two weeks ago. We're having our second reading of the ordinance tomorrow. This is a proceeding that was done for the convenience of those who wanted to give testimony and for which the board made this extraordinary effort. And so Oregon law requires that you arrive at your decisions openly. It does not require that there be an unrestricted ability to present testimony, particularly when this board has not restricted the means of giving testimony. There was the opportunity to give written testimony and email testimony up to 6:00. And so it is within the board's choice as to what to do in this situation.
So we're going to hear James Lee Hamilton's testimony, and then we'll take a break and we'll come back. And if there's anyone who has not had the opportunity to testify at that time, I'm going to ask you to sign up, and we'll give you that time to sign up. And that's, again, restricted to those who have not testified yet. So James.
Thank you. Dear Board of Clackamas County Commissioners, it's the 18,000-pound per axle vehicles that do the damage to the roadways, in my opinion. Clackamas County now has gotten the go-ahead to add the county's surcharge on motor vehicle registration fees for the purpose of raising Sellwood Bridge project monies. Herewith, the county commissioners asked to answer related questions raised below. The ODOT is an agency that is driving the Administrative Procedures Act and set forth an ORS 183.3101 as an agency. ODOT is responsible for the regulation of persons who are defined for the purposes of that chapter in ORS 183.3108. This definition of person is similar, if not interchangeable, with the list of entities as appears at ORS 174.105. That section defines person for all purposes throughout the Oregon Revised Statutes unless the section requires a particular definition to the contrary. Persons in the above listings are generally recognizable as entities formed for the purpose of holding themselves out as doing business. Perhaps the term individuals, that term appears in both lists. However, it's not recognizable as a business as the others. However, with guidance from the Oregon Constitution, Article 4, Section 20, the same Constitution is sworn to be upheld by its legislative agency administrators and county commissioners. We can all understand that listing comprises a single subject or class of regulated entities. Because of the term "traffic" as an activity that can be regulated under a body of law is the movement of merchandise toward market, could also be the transportation of pay fares. No one has passengers to a destination, and laws are of constitutional necessity relevant only to a single subject. The term "person" must exclude the general public. The rule that was authorized by Section 803.035, which says in subsection 2 that the public will be allowed to pay the same fees as other vehicles titled by the state, Section 803.040, goes on to say that if this state has issued title for a vehicle, this vehicle shall remain titled by the state and subject to all the provisions of the vehicle code. The optional titling rule was adopted and certified and effective on February 16. Subsection 2, adoption of the optional titling rule, ODOT Director Matthew Garrett asked the Oregon Department of Transportation Commissioners to please not consider giving his agency an authorizing rule for optional registration. Mr. Garrett's request, the OTC, is a public record dated October 19, 2009. And as represented to them in their quarterly meeting on October 21, 2009, they agreed not to adopt a rule to allow for optional registration. So the question really boils down to this, and I'm cutting through. When were you good folks of the county board going to tell us that if we wanted to legally help with our highway maintenance, we should figure out a way to an alternative of ODOT's DMV? Most of us are not even of the business in the regulated class of owners and operators of motor vehicles. So we don't qualify to purchase the license or permission required by law to pursue any commercial activity, trade, occupation, or profession where it can provide statutes 183.3105, issued by agencies at 183.3101 to the persons at 183.3108.
Thank you, James. I'm going to have to ask you to summarize in two seconds. You're over by about a minute.
Well, the bottom line is it's not our responsibility. It belongs to the truckers.
All right, thank you. We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back here at 7:40. All right, I'm going to call us back to order. We have one, two, three, four, five people who have signed up, who have not testified prior. And the first one on the list is Thelma Hagan-Miller, and the second is Jan Castle. If you'll both please come forward, you'll have two minutes on the clock. And we'll need your name and address for the record. Good evening. Thelma.
Good evening, Chair Peterson and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagan-Miller. I live at 3405 Southeast Westview Avenue in Oak Grove, unincorporated area of Clackamas County. I have listened to all of the oral testimony at both of these vehicle registration hearings. And I have a couple of observations that I'd like to share. One, I think, is the impact of a registration fee for vehicles, and particularly people who are like me, who have more than one vehicle. I've heard that more than one time out there. But to everybody in the county, and I think one of the things that's been upsetting people is that people who do not consider themselves users of the Sellwood Bridge are the ones who are upset. And as far as I'm concerned, rightfully so. I think the user fees are a fair fee. And I just returned from vacation in Ohio and happened to have occasion to use the turnpike back there, which is a tollway. It was established before I ever left Ohio back in the early '50s. And I was going to a friend's place that was, I don't even know how many miles away. But I know it cost me $2.85 one way to get on the turnpike and not have any problems getting there. When we left that place and returned home, we came by the surface streets because I already paid enough. I call them a privilege fee. It was a privilege for me to use that turnpike and have a fee. And I really think that what you need to do some more investigation on, and I know they've said something about tolling the bridge, I really think that you need to look closer at that, which is a much fairer way for users of the bridge to help pay for the bridge instead of everybody paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jan Castle. I live in Lakoff Swigo, and I would like to testify in favor of the $5 charge, which seems extremely reasonable to me considering that 70% of the cars that use the bridge are from Clackamas County. I do understand the frustration expressed and the anger expressed by citizens of the county who do not use the bridge. But I would point out that you represent everybody in the county, and your responsibility is to also be a good collaborator with the other counties in the tri-county area, in fact, in the whole state. This room is not full of all the other people in the county, who, many of whom do not have a problem with this. So I would just like you to keep that in perspective. Not everybody is angry about this. You've done a very nice job of listening respectfully. Thank you. To those concerns, and I thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
All right. Thank you both for coming in and testifying. We have three more. Justin Bloom and Kim... I'm sorry, Jim Carlock are next. Justin.
I'm a little nervous. I've... My main thing that came to my mind, and people have thrown... Have said just about everything, I think, that really matters numerous times. But I've heard some people argue that this should be done for... Well, because it will create jobs, and that's the reason to do it. It'll help the economy. When I'm hearing that, it makes me think of something in economics called broken window fallacy. You go and... You have someone go and break out a bunch of windows. Is it gonna... It's going to create jobs. You have... You're going to have glassmakers put to work. You're going to have insurance people put to work. You're going to have repairmen put to work. But still, somebody's got to pay for all those broken windows. They got to pay for that work. And I don't really think this is about just $5. People... Yeah, it cost me $5 to get here probably. But there are a lot of... I mean, we've sat through increase after increase, and after a while, it gets to where, okay, well, how much more is this going to keep going? How many more increases do we have to put up with? I think that's pretty much what I have to say.
Great, thank you for coming in. You did great.
Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My understanding is that one of the commissioners has publicly acknowledged that this bridge will get built whether or not Clackamas contributes any money to it. Number two. Portland, in apparently their TRIMET meeting this morning, said that they're going to take $20 million that they were... Would have put into the Sellwood Bridge and move it to light rail if you give them this money. Because it will free up $20 million to Portland and can then move to light rail. So in effect, if you pass this money for the Sellwood Bridge, you are in effect contributing $20 million to light rail, to the Milwaukee Light Rail Line. The subject of neglecting infrastructure came up. Some of the members of this commission are on J-PAC at Metro, which allocates infrastructure money throughout the area. And a large chunk of that money that would otherwise go to maintaining current infrastructure has been reallocated to, by law, light rail. So to the extent that you're allowing the flexible funding, I believe that's what it was, from this region, to be allocated to light rail, you're taking money away from infrastructure, which is exactly the mentality at Metro and the county of Multnomah that allowed this bridge to get in the condition it's in. Now, since I've got a few seconds left, let's review some basic facts that are acknowledged by anybody that's knowledgeable in the transportation world. The cost of light rail, including the government subsidies, is around a dollar a passenger mile. The cost of driving a car is around 20 to 25 cents a passenger mile. You can find that in the federal data sources. You can also find the energy consumption. You'll find that light rail uses about the same energy as a modern small car. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, Kathy Kitchen.
Good evening. Good evening. Kathy Kitchen, I reside in Oregon City. And I'm opposed to the tax. It appears that you want people not to drive a car, but to use a bike or mass transit. And we live in a state that has very unusual weather. We have a lot of rain. We have a lot of snow. We have a lot of ice. And for a lot of people, that's just not something that's feasible. I couldn't do my job. I drive all day long. And I couldn't ride a bike from my home to my job because I couldn't carry the things that I need to carry. And especially in, you know, terrible weather, when you have to dress professionally, it's kind of hard to get in and out of those bike clothing all the time. So I think that there are people who want to use a bike, and if they do, that's great. But I don't think that spending the amount of money that you want to spend on this bridge makes sense because I don't think we're going to triple or quadruple the amount of people that ride a bike. I drive all over Beaverton all day long, and that's a big biking, walking community. And I probably pass an average of 10 people on a bike the whole day that are going to work in the morning and coming home in the afternoon. And they're regulars. But I don't see 50, 75, 100. Yet the Sellwood Bridge, if you do take it, it's a quagmire. And it's scary to go over. I don't go over it. I avoided it at all costs. You know, if I have to reroute, I reroute the longest way around because I don't want to go over the Sellwood Bridge. If you're going to repair the bridge, which I think is a great idea, then you need to repair it so that it's feasible for cars. And you can give some room for bikes, but I don't think $320 million is really a fiscally responsible amount of money. I'm sure that you can find a less costly way to do it.
Thank you for being unflappable in light of the lights leaving, and we appreciate that. If there's anyone else who has not already testified, who wishes to come forward, now would be the time. If you have anything to say now, then the public testimony for this evening is closed. And now the board will deliberate on some questions, clarifying questions for staff at this time. What's going to happen next is that we do have the public hearing scheduled for tomorrow. Again, it will be for those who have not already testified. And there are... The written testimony closed at 6:00 PM this evening. So we'll be able to look at all of that in regards to what came in and the testimony that was given in the last two hearings, as well as whoever shows up tomorrow. And we'll be able to make our decision. But I believe that there are some clarifying questions that the commission may have of staff that we may want to ask tonight and then get more information on for tomorrow's public hearing. So Commissioner Lee Han, did you have some questions?
Sure. I just wanted to start by saying that having sat now through several hours of testimony, there were a lot of good points raised on all sides of this issue and raised a lot of questions in my mind about it. And a few things that seem to resonate in terms of general consensus, even with people with widely disparate viewpoints. One is that, first of all, I think there's general agreement that the Sellwood Bridge is in desperate condition. It's in desperate need of something, or it wouldn't be a two on a scale of 1 to 100 in terms of... And be limited to limiting buses and trucks from using it. And along with that, emergency vehicles, and that was... So... And now that that's occurring to me, that's one of my questions, is we haven't heard from emergency providers who use mutual aid agreements for both sides of the river and how much the weight limiting impacts their ability to do their routing for mutual aid or redundant routes that particularly fire service who are running heavy vehicles. So that would be one question. I don't know if they have weighed in any of the fire departments that are in that mutual aid territory. That occurred to me, so it's not in my notes, Sarah, just off the top of my head. The second thing that it seems to me there's a lot of consensus around is that the Sellwood Bridge is important to Clackamas County. We can argue whether it's 70% or 40% or 50% or what it is, the traffic back and forth across the Sellwood Bridge. But it's important. Traffic across the Willamette River is important to Clackamas County, to our economic future, and that's what we heard, especially from the business community. We can't isolate ourselves and expect to prosper without being connected. And we have very few bridges in Clackamas County that get us across the Willamette. The two big ones are federal facilities, and then we've got the Arch Bridge, which we're closing for two years. So we're very limited in our ability to take care of ourselves in terms of getting back and forth across the Willamette in order to do commerce or any other activities. So it's a critical link for us, no matter how you look at it. And then the other thing, I think there was a lot of consensus around, is that we all would be happier if someone else would pay for it. And I think that's true in Multnomah County. That's true in Portland. Portland, uh, that's true with ODOT, that's true with everyone. We would like everyone else's share to be bigger and ours to be smaller. Um, but we're, we're trying to arrive at something that is equitable and fair, and, and, um, and that's the challenge here on this. Other questions that I have that were raised are, that I would like a little more, um, background information. W- one is the repair issue. I know we had a thumbnail sketch here before the meeting started, but I would like a little bit more, um, perhaps, uh, I don't know if we can get an engineer to give a, um, more of a detailed description of what goes into the decision about when it's appropriate to repair versus when it's appropriate to replace, both on the engineering side and the, and the cost effectiveness side. Um, that maybe we could use a little bit more information on that. And then I am very interested in the tolling issues and, and what goes into the tolling decision. Um, so, uh, I know it's easy to think we should just toll the road, but it, it's a very complicated, um, situation, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know that, that part of Clackamas County's concerns, all along with tolling the CRC, the Columbia River Crossing, was that we didn't want that told if they weren't also going to toll the Glen Jackson Bridge, because it would just shift a tremendous amount of, of traffic over to Glen Jackson and to 205. So all of a sudden, um, if we didn't toll both bridges across Columbia, the 205 would be, um, dysfunctional. And that's our, definitely Clackamas County's lifeline. Um, so the tolling issue, we need more information on. It's, it's not just thirty thousand trips times what you would, uh, charge, it's how much of that traffic would be diverted to, uh, to Abernathy, to the Arch Bridge, or, or other routes. I presume the next one would be Ross Island. Um, and, uh, so that, so the cost, the, the income is reduced unless you also toll those other routes, and what's the likelihood or support for tolling those other bridges which are not receiving any, any money? Otherwise, uh, I know these studies have been done, but I don't, I haven't seen them. I, I mean, I know, not necessarily studies, but I know there's been discussion and analysis on this. Um, and, and then, uh, I think in terms of, um, what I would like to see from staff is, um, a, a resolution in terms of at least what I could support as a commissioner, the, the kinds of things for me to be able to, uh, to support this after those questions are answered is, um, um, we need to be clear with a, a clear resolution statement of our intention on a few things. One of those is the sunset provision, and I do think a sunset provision is important, and we make it clear with a board resolution that, uh, we intend for this to sunset with the, um, completion of the, the five dollars would sunset with the completion of, of the, um, Selwood repair. Any decision beyond that would, would be made at that, at that point. It would be a whole different decision, but this would sunset. Um, uh, I wanna, I, I think it's important that we include in a board resolution that it be capped at, that, that it is absolutely capped at five dollars, that it is not creepable, and that, uh, I, I don't know if that's a word.
It's a, it's a technical.
I don't know how to spell it.
Uh, and, uh, not only that the five dollars be, um, be capped, but that our twenty-two million dollar contribution, or, or our principal contribution be capped as well. So that if there are cost overruns, they are not our, we're capped at our twenty-two million principal, and we're not going beyond there. Um, I think it's important that, um, that we recognize somewhere our contribution. If, if this is how we proceed, I think it's important that we recognize that this is a contribution to a Multnomah County asset, even though we know, we also recognize that, that, uh, we shoulder a big burden in terms of its use. But that somehow we recognize that we need some reciprocity, that Multnomah County, that we would look to Multnomah County to likewise support Clackamas County in their needs in the future, and somehow word that as well. And then, on the economic development side, I think there are, um, uh, some important considerations. One is that if this goes forward, in whatever, at whatever level of project it goes forward, the Clackamas County contribution is very small, is the, at least what we're talking about now on the bridge replacement is seven percent. So, uh, when we hear the tradespeople testifying in favor, it's different than the broken window analysis, because, um, uh, most of the money, the lion's share of this money is coming from other places. It's coming from all over Multnomah County, uh, from the federal government, from the state of Oregon at ODOT, from the city of Portland. And the likelihood that a large percentage of those jobs are going to be, um, Clackamas County tradespeople is very high because of the, the Clackamas County businesses that we have, like Oregon Iron Works. We have skilled, blue collar trades labor in Clackamas County. And I think too, that what I'd like to see as a board resolution as well is something that, um, to the highest degree possible, I know there are restrictions on what we can, um, in the competitive bid atmosphere, but, um, that we have two pieces there that are, one, that, that, uh, we, we want a high number of Clackamas County residents in those, in that job mix. And, um, and to the degree that we can do it, uh, as well, as, as is permitted by law, um, that we, we pursue opportunities for Clackamas County contracts, Clackamas County businesses to be, um, uh, a, a significant part of this mix. It's, I, I'm, I'm confident they would be in any event, because that's the work that Clackamas County does to a large degree. We provide for the region. In this case, the rest of the region will be pouring massive amounts of money into, uh, most likely Clackamas County jobs and, um, and Clackamas County businesses, which then get recirculated in Clackamas County. But I think we should make sure that our expectation that that is, um, followed as much as possible is, uh, is somehow recognized in, in a board, uh, resolution as well. And I don't know if there might be other, other things that occur to any other commissioners.
So we're on the, um, basically questions and things that we would want to have answered tomorrow, and also, um, anything that.
Perhaps a, a draft resolution of some of these issues.
Right.
If we could sort of detail out some of them.
And, and anything that we would want, um, changed in the actual, um, ordinance itself. Commissioner Bernard.
Also, uh, it was expressed, and I agree with everything Commissioner Lee Han said, I was also gonna suggest that, that there be a cap. Um, a couple other things, uh, in this troublesome economy, um, I think that any delay we can have on, on the actual collection of this, uh, fee should be delayed until 2012. Additionally, I have some concerns about how Clackamas County would, uh, give Multnomah County this twenty-two million dollars. And whether that would be our capacity of bonding, which I've heard concerns that we have enough debt. Um, I'm, I'm concerned that, that either the re, uh, the ordinance or the IGA, uh, suggests that Multnomah County, uh, get that debt. I'm a little bit confused about how, I know it's collected by, uh, the motor vehicle, uh, fee, and they collect it when you register, but how, does that money come to us? Does it come, uh, go directly to Multnomah County? Is, or does it go to somebody who's building the bridge? But I think that the ordinance should reflect, uh, our concerns that perhaps somebody else be required to, uh, have the burden of the bonds and not Clackamas County.
So we would need that question answered tomorrow, of how, the methodology of how, or what the possibilities are, and what clarifying language we could put in to direct staff to negotiate the IGA. All right, Commissioner Leininger.
Um, I would like to amplify, um, the position that, that we should do everything that we can to have the, any jobs created as a result of this construction project be, um, filled with a preference for local, um, contractors, subcontractors, suppliers of materials, and, and raw materials. And, and I believe, I know that there are, are state law procurement restrictions on what we can do, but there are also, to my knowledge, some, um, provisions that say in emergency situations, in, in dire economic situations, there may be opportunities to, to definitely focus on local providers. And I think that we need to research whether or not this project, um, fits within those constraints, because I want to make sure that, that a Clackamas County contribution of funds benefit local workers to the maximum extent allowed by law.
Commissioner Austin.
Well, this is easy for me. I could ditto everything that I've heard so far too. And I also wanted to comment that I'm, I'm really glad that everyone chose to come in in our two separate hearings, and hearing from both sides, and, uh, lots and lots of good comment that, uh, we're taking to heart here. I think I'm, I'm really focusing on, uh, a lot of the comments that came from some of the business groups, some of the labor groups, and the environmental groups, where they were all supportive and, uh, for maybe different reasons too. So that's a unique blend in terms of, uh, you know, concern for not only the environment, but for the economy, for the need for jobs. Uh, we do have a lot of, uh, folks in the, in the trades arena out of work right now. Uh, I would love to see as much as legally possible, as you've already heard from a couple of us, uh, what we can do to encourage, you know, a local contracting, that would be for the jobs, for local materials, for, uh, local, uh, whether it's somebody like an Oregon Iron Works or something like that. We have a lot of concrete, uh, workers out there who are out of work right now, so I could see, uh, it would be great to see, uh, more of them back to work too. So, uh, I think those are, I think we've, we've covered so many of these issues already, so I don't want to be repetitive. Thank you.
Um, I just have two questions that I would ask, that we, uh, just get a cursory answer. Knowing the long history of research of what to do with the Selwood and what other bridges, um, could we possibly build in between the Selwood Bridge and I-205, um, I guess I'd like to know, um, in the, the study from nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, where this started the cascade of decisions towards where we are today, um, if there was any cost estimates of what those other potential bridge options would cost in Clackamas County? Um, obviously, that's, that data would be ten years old, um, but it would give us an idea of the burden that Clackamas County would be looking at to provide another bridge within Clackamas County, even if it was a ODOT facility at two thirteen. It would still require Clackamas County match of some sort, um, because nobody has the funding for these large projects anymore. So I guess I'd like to know if we don't invest at this level in the Selwood, what other options would we be looking at in the future that would require a larger burden on Clackamas County? And I'm assuming it would be a larger burden, but I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, the, the other question I have is, um, the state has invested extremely heavily in unincorporated Clackamas County bridges, and I was wondering if we could get the information, um, on the number of bridges, their location, and, uh, the amount that the state has decided to invest in our rural, unincorporated areas, to make sure that those lifelines for those folks have been met, because Clackamas County doesn't have the funding for these large projects in terms of, um, the amount that we have spent, um, on those bridges to make sure that folks can move around. So, um, just looking at the big picture, I'm trying to make sure that we put this investment that we could be making in terms of what other potential costs are out there, because a lot of folks have said we need to invest in our own community, and I think all of us up here are in agreement that we need to find more ways to be able to maintain our roads and add capacity where we need to add it, and to replace bridges when we need to. I don't think there's any question on this board and, of that, but I'd like to know what other, um, significant investments could be looming out there in terms of, um, moving people, um, across the Willamette River in Clackamas. So, thank you. Um, and I ditto everything that was said. I, um, think then if there are no other clarifying questions or directions to staff for tomorrow.
Just, just one more thing that I meant to mention too, was, I think when the EIS was done on, for the project, uh, there's always a purpose and need statement, and so I'm just wondering whether that, you know, drives the ultimate design in terms of, you know, is it two-lane, four-lane, how do you accommodate bikes, pedestrians, so on. My guess is that a lot of that information went in to, to help create the, and define purpose and need, and that would probably get back to whether it's, is it possible to repair the existing structure, or does it need to be a little bit bigger, or more stable to handle the additional capacity? So, so that might help, you know, some of the answers that I think we're, we're looking for in terms of the repair versus the, uh, uh, replace question.
And, uh, just lastly, I know that Multnomah County has made their staff available to us tomorrow morning, um, so we might want to provide them with some of these questions so that they can answer them.
That's wonderful, because I just asked them a few minutes ago to try to make somebody available. I was involved quite a bit with the project, but it was over a year ago, and extensive studies were done on tolling, uh, a separate report was done on tolling, uh, lots of work was done on the repair question. I don't know if independent studies were done, but I think so. And Commissioner Austin's comment, uh, this was a federally funded environmental impact statement, so purpose and need, alternatives and all of that were exhaustively, exhaustively over many months with many, many public meetings, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people attending, uh, led to the point we are, where we're at today. So there's an enormous amount of information available, and, uh, it's even available on the website. Uh, they have a complete, uh, project history and very accessible to anybody in the public as well that would like to, uh, look at that information.
Commissioner Bernard.
Um, the traffic study you referred to, is that also available on the website?
It will be, if it, uh, the, the traffic study itself, I believe, is now available on the, our website, okay? Because we, we unearthed it, we found it. It's eleven years old, it was done by Metro. It's a PDF file, it's kind of hazy, but you can read it. And, uh, we also contacted Metro and learned that they still have some of the raw data that went into the, uh, traffic forecasting. Uh, we don't believe that's online today, but we think we can make it online. I'm thinking we can make it online. I don't know what, uh, how many gigabytes of, of information is there, probably not that much, but we're gonna make an effort to, to do that. We've had several questions already at the break, wondering about that, and, uh, we got one email address to send the information to, we know we can do that.
What is the email address?
Well, no, it's to the citizen that asked the question. We're gonna get, we're gonna get them.
No, I mean, what, what is the website address?
Our, our website address.
Yes.
Is www.clackamas.us. And Mary has brought it up on the screen, so anybody watching this hearing at home is gonna be able to see that. Um, and, uh, there, right there on our homepage is a lot of information, um, links to the Selwood Bridge information, so, um, it's easy to find, it's right there, it's the first thing to come up. Thank you, Mary, for bringing that up. Um, any other clarifying questions? I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know that, um, uh, taking some time out of your busy day to provide testimony, we did hear you. We are trying to, um, find ways to answer the questions and for you and ourselves, um, and also weigh all of the options and make the best decision for Clackamas County as a whole. And we will, uh, be finishing this at our, uh, business meeting tomorrow at ten AM. Again, we will be taking testimony for those who have not previously testified, except for Multnomah County, because we are asking them specifically to come back with some specific information. Um, so that will be helpful, I think, in, uh, putting together our, our com- So that will be helpful, I think, in putting together our comments that day. So, thank you to staff for all the work of making sure that the questions that have been raised to date have gotten answered and getting the information quickly up on the web. And thank you to our deputy in the back of the room for taking the time to work with us. And with that, we are adjourned for the evening.